Okay, I'll say. Welcome to the Board of Select and Sewer Commissioner meeting for November 16, 2016. All members are present with the exception of Ms. Bonson. Our first item on the agenda is public comments. Hearing none, we'll go to approval of minutes for November 2, 2016, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, next item is payable, payroll and payable warrants for the town. Do you want to make the motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the payroll and payable warrants FY 2007-19, correction, 2017-19, 2017-20, and 2017-10. School warrant number S8, and municipal light plant warrant number 10, covering the period November 3 through November 16, 2016.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, and we can go with, since they're here, we can go with that 715 item. The Treasury Collector and Town Clerk consider signing temporary ban for police station and town hall projects.
Thank you guys, all got the packages, all the packets from Anita with all the information. This is a nice neat little, all the yellow.
We don't have to sign them, Chris.
All those, yeah, but they're all.
All of us?
Yes, please.
Okay, do you want to add anything to that?
Sure, so what we're doing tonight is where you'll be voting and signing the new bans, the borrowing against anticipation notes, and this includes the remaining balance of the town hall borrowing and the old ban for the police department with the new money for the additional construction costs for the police station. So the new ban principal amount is $5,671,000, and that requires a vote of the board and signing.
Is there a motion to approve the ban as described?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
I just want to let the public know, this does pay off the old ban, and Bonnie, you're going to have to help me with this because I didn't bring my notes, of the town hall and police bans for about $2 million.
Two, two and a half.
And the principal we're paying on those two that's being rolled into the new is 650?
Is, we're just, we have a new ban.
But the principal that we paid off on the, that we're not rolling in, the principal down payment?
Okay, for the town hall.
Yeah, was what?
Was 400, 400 something thousand dollars that we paid down, so that gives us the 1.170 for the town hall, because we paid down quite a big amount of the principal. So we take that plus the 4, 4,600, 4,600, so that gives us the 5,761.
Perfect, thank you.
And then, of course, you just noticed that we did really well with the interest rate, less than 0.92 percent. We also got premiums of over 60,000, or half of the, almost half of the interest, and because we paid it by the scale of our chief to put the new issuance cost and pay off the old at the same time, we were able to save the new borrowing, or the new money that was just approved here, police station. So we're paying less than $12,000 for issuance cost, which is great.
So the balance on the town hall was the 1.170.
So, no.
This year, and then?
That's what, that's okay.
Actually, it will be the 800 of the six.
No, that include, the 600 was just paid. We just paid down roughly 600,000 to bring it to the 1.1.
And the slide, the slide that we showed, the 800 and something, that's next fiscal year.
Right, we owe 1,765,250, we paid down 594,750, we owe 1,170, 1,170,500 as Pat said, so we take the both together, we have a new ban, 5,671,000.
Okay, any other questions?
They did a great job on that though, thank you.
That's still on you, we'll see what we can do.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, and we're signing these now.
Just the yellow stickers.
Just the yellow stickers, we're going to miss one.
So I'll get them on Thursday morning, we will, the town will, as soon as we get it, hopefully by 9:30, then I'll turn around and pay off our old debt.
Sign the bar for five minutes.
That's quick.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for being late.
That's fine.
Things got crazy at the office.
This will go again.
I have two pens in my hand.
Let's get this done before we go on, so we won't mess it up.
This is like taking a first mortgage.
We are.
I know, I know.
As you're signing, I can just go on to a couple of the items. Recognize and acceptance of donations in the amount of $840 from various individuals in the Worcester Bridge Club from July to September of 16 into the Council on Aging Gift Account and approve the expenditures of these funds for general purposes.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Next item is consider voting to designate Mass Office of Business Development as financing authority for the construction loans associated with the 70 Hartwell Street project. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Who? A motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I think this just makes the authority to do it, is that what it does?
Right, the reason why you're having to vote tonight is that there is on the books still an inactive industrial development finance authority that the town has. We have no members on that board currently, but because that board is still on the books, so to speak, before Mass Development can become the financing agency for the improvements to 70 Hartwell Street, the town needs to take a vote to designate Mass Development as being the financing authority.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, the next item we have is Town Administrative Reports.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, good job.
Any audio would like to go on those?
Okay, thank you. First thing I'd like to bring to the board's attention is I did receive an email from our DPW Director Butch Jackson today, and he stated that they have done very well with the quantities of asphalt needed to do the paving on the Worcester roadways that the board's already approved. He has enough money left over within that original allocation to do Shady Lane, and if the board were to say, to give the green light to do Shady Lane, he believes he can get Mass Broken Stone to go ahead and get that done this Friday, wasn't on the list of the streets that you'd originally voted. So if you would like him to move ahead and add that to the list, he did pre-check with Mass DOT, they're okay with it, as long as you're okay with it, they'll just add it to that list, the paperwork that he had submitted to them, and we're good to go. So I just wanted to find out if the board was agreeable to adding that on. We were so far under the values that you'd originally allocated that even with adding Shady Lane to the mix, you still have $43,000 left over from that original appropriation for those listed roadways.
Is Shady, Shady Lane, was that the next in the order, the packing order?
It was the next group of higher priority roadways, right.
Make a, no, I just think it's great that they were able to get all this done and coming down to budget, that's something that usually doesn't happen. But make a motion to approve Shady Lane to be paved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Do you think we could add one more street? We have the remainder money?
Well, I think, I think we should relook with Ledverne and look at it, we should relook at the whole project again now, because it's not going to do much now.
The other thing is, is that they're going to be closing the asphalt plants down soon, they typically do sometime after Thanksgiving, so it's highly unlikely that we could add another road to this even if we wanted to.
So in the estimated, the painting, once this is done, soon after the painting will, because he has an estimated 5,000 for that.
For the painting on?
I don't know, it just says painting estimate, I'm guessing that's all the roads because they're.
There are some, the painting is involved with the intersection of Prescott and Woodland, and then there's some other roadways that need additional painting.
So all the roads he paved, he's going to put center lines and lines on the side, I imagine, because now.
I'm not sure all the, I'm not sure all the roads will have the side fog lines.
Right, not the centers.
And not all the roads, obviously, in town are going to get painted, they, you know, he's only doing $5,000 worth, and that will be done Thursday night after they complete the intersection at Prescott.
I'm guessing, but I'm guessing like Worcester Street and things like that are going to have central lines.
I haven't seen the list of roadways that he's doing this year, but it's, you know, he goes through the roadways and evaluates what roads need to be updated with terms of paint condition, visibility.
Chris, are you asking if the road got paved, if it's going to have the lines down it?
That's right, obviously not the side streets, but like Worcester Street, you definitely need a center line in there, because it's stacked.
I don't have a list of the roadways that is going, you know, newly paved roads would be the top priority, but I'm sure there's a few other areas where you have aged paint on the roadways that are going to be up Thursday night.
Okay, now I get it.
So yeah, if we can just, I'd like to see a list. I mean, I guess we'll see after Thursday night, would get painted, but if we could grab a list. Okay, so I have a motion and a second for Shady Lane. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Just updating the board in terms of the town meeting vote to establish the two cable TV employees. I've been working with the Personnel Board and the Pay Coordinator to pull together those job descriptions, so Personnel Board did vote to approve those job descriptions their last meeting on November 9. So we're now moving ahead with posting those job descriptions with the Town Clerk's office, and Nancy is working on the internal advertisement of those two positions. We're required to do the internal advertisement, and then absent any internal candidates, we'll go on to the regular full advertisement. Because the two individuals who currently hold these positions are contractors, they're not considered internal candidates, so we have to wait to accept applications from them till we get to the, you know, the external advertisement process. So that's moving ahead, and we hope to have appointments for those two positions in place in early December. Regarding the Complete Streets Program, we did receive confirmation from the state that we've been awarded almost $16,000 under their Tier Two Technical Assistance Program to work with CMRPC to do the prioritization plan of our roadways. The timing will work out perfectly, having just signed the Community Compact with Lieutenant Governor the other day. So now that we are the 240th town in the state to join that Community Compact program, we are receiving bonus points that will boost up our ability to apply and hopefully be a high likely candidate of being awarded Tier Three funds under the Complete Streets Program so that we can get the money for actual construction of the roadways once we've completed our prioritization plan. So that's good news. Townwide Planning, wanted to let the board know that the committee is in the process of reviewing the draft updated chapters that had begun to be developed before Leon Gomond, our previous town administrator, had left. Some of the chapters will be fairly easy to update, but others, we will need some consulting assistance in doing that. We, I've reached out to CMRPC to see if they would be available to assist us, and as they did before, they have, they've provided me with an estimate for assisting with various different chapters that we may need. But the good news is that we have a resident in town, Jean Costello, who has a lot of experience in terms of editing planning documents, helping pulling together information in a really cohesive way that makes it easy to read and understand, and she has agreed to work with me to assist the Townwide Planning Committee in really providing updated drafts that we would then, you know, be further along before we would need to seek that professional help later on. So I think that's fantastic, and I really wanted to publicly thank Jean for stepping up and offering her assistance in that way. We continue to receive training on the updated Mass General laws, there've been a lot of changes lately, we've been discussing them briefly in the past. I did attend Public Records Law Training last Thursday, the training was put on by KP Law, and it was quite a comprehensive training session and an extensive handout that they provided to every community who attended. So in your package, you have a copy of the summary sheet that was included in their training, but I will be providing the entire handout to all the different boards, committees, and to all our town staff, so that everyone's aware of the different provisions that are going to go into effect January 1st on this. This will be an item for monthly review in the staff meetings moving forward for the next few months. And under my contract, it calls for performance evaluation to be done by the board on my performance to date, and that's due in December. Review and evaluations intended to look at different specific skill sets that are outlined in the contract, as well as my progress on the goals that we had set when we met in July of this year. So I just wanted to ask the board to confirm the process that you'd like to take in terms of gathering together the, you know, the feedback from each of you or other department heads or town officials that you might want to have done in order to kind of inform your process of reviewing my performance. So I'll welcome your feedback on that, and that's it for my report.
Questions?
On that report, did we, like last, last, well, two years ago, we did like a sheet for Leon, didn't we? Some kind of like a scoring sheet?
Yes. That's how, I mean, we'd have to.
Do the same thing, is that?
We'd need to.
Use the same format that had been used for Leon in the past.
Right.
Okay. So you'll email each one of us with that, and then we'll work on it.
Okay, thank you.
Right, if we could maybe, oh, go ahead.
Just let us know when you need them back, Chris, because I'm assuming, you know, an end date, because I thought last year or the year before, we kind of, somebody, you or the chairman compiled everything and put it in one, so there weren't 10 or five of us. So I didn't know if you're going to use that same process.
Yeah, okay, we'll figure, we'll figure that out, and then we'll get it out. You said it has to be back by December?
The contract just requires that it be done in December.
Done in December, okay.
I have one other question on her report. You mentioned the cable TV and employees, do we know if they're interested or?
They are.
They are, okay, so that's good, okay, that's great, okay, I just was curious. So that could, possibility be an easy two positions to fill?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, good, great.
Because even if we get to the point where we, you know, we get to the point where we're advertising externally, even if we get other applications to come forward.
Yeah.
The two individuals who are currently filling those roles would have a leg up over other applicants.
Right.
Because they, they know our equipment, they know our policies, our procedures, they're familiar with the process.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If we could just possibly maybe, maybe the next meeting, on the meeting after, get an update on the goals, on the board's goals.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we'll present that and see where we stand.
Good.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is consider voting to accept hand-signed contract with RAC Builders Incorporated for Police Station Project.
Make a motion to accept and sign a contract?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just, they, I think they're going to be able to start right after the holiday, and they're going to be able to put the foundation this year.
Thanksgiving, right after Thanksgiving.
So it's going to be really good, we're going to move forward, we're going to see a lot of progress now. It's been a long way, but we're going to start seeing some progress, so it's a good news.
Okay, any other questions? No, hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. I'm going to talk slowly, but. Concurrents on the appointment of Melinda MacArthur, 9 Maplewood Ave, to the Agricultural Commission as a member who receives no income from farming, effective November 18, 2016, for a term to expire April 30, 2019.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Concurrents on the appointment of Carl Herrman, 185 Malden Street, to the Conservation Commission as an associate member, effective November 18, 2016, for a term to expire April 30, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Meetings and invitations announced November 6, response by Police and Fire Departments. What is that?
We had a bit of good news from our Fire Chief, Tom Welsh, on last Monday. He was very happy to report that the Police and Fire Department had done a fantastic job in saving a choking infant's life the previous afternoon. It was totally a joint effort, all services were involved between the, you know, the 911 call, the dispatchers, the on-duty police and firefighters, EMTs, and the extra full-time paramedics who arrived on scene from home. The, you know, the West Boylston Police helped with the, you know, dealing with the family on the scene, they arranged for the road closures, and, you know, they helped assist to get rapid transit of the Worcester Police to escort the ambulance to the, right to the ER door. So the chief was extremely proud of everybody involved, and he wanted to make people well aware of that really, you know, collaborative approach, and it was so successful in this instance.
That's great news. It's great, and then Pat, you want to, we've got this here.
I don't know if I want to go into all the details, but there's a new traffic pattern that's, it's going to start Friday, Friday morning, correct?
Friday morning.
Friday morning at Prospect and Woodland Streets. Do you know the details off the top of your head? Can anybody brief those details without, I don't want to.
Well, this says, I'm on the town's website, it says Thursday, November 17.
After, after 9:00 PM.
So after 9:00 PM Thursday.
That's when the painting will be done. They wanted to wait until the painting, the new line painting had been completed before opening up. So basically, there's a new stop sign that's going to be installed at the bottom of Shrewsbury Street, which ends up being Woodland Street once you pass through West Boylston from Holden. So when you look at the island in the middle of that intersection, that backside of the island will become a one-way road heading toward Worcester. If you're coming from Worcester on Prospect Street, you'll no longer be able to bear left to go up behind the triangle heading toward Holden. And then the new stop signs at the northbound and southbound on Prospect Street at the intersection of Woodland will become a four-way stop. People have probably been noticing that the stop signs have been there, covered with black last year, for quite a number of months now. So proceeding west towards Holden, the stop line, stop sign on Woodland Street after the four corners will be removed, and the stop sign heading south on Prospect Street after the four corners will also be removed. So it should be a very smooth transition to a good four-way stop, and the section of roadway behind the island will be one-way heading toward Worcester.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Did we reach out to Holden?
Yes.
We talked about reaching out, so they can make.
Our PPW Director did.
Good, okay, just because we don't want anybody like, oh my gosh, that morning. Thank you.
So they don't put a, no left turn, and right before the intersection?
Oh, that's a good idea.
So they don't, they've always taken a left there.
I can't remember what the signage is.
It's an unpaved road.
I know it's not paved.
They are going to put an orange barrier.
Barrier. I can't remember if there was a warning sign of no left turn in that or not.
It'll be a visible orange, big.
No, no, I just didn't know if they were going to put a sign there or not.
Sounds like a good idea, especially to help people get used to it.
There will be signs, you know, warning people of changes to traffic patterns. Those will be, you know, the electronic signboards that will be there for a while to help people get used to the changes in the traffic patterns.
Is the message board there now, telling people that the date is Friday morning?
I'm not sure if they're there today, I think they were going to be put out tomorrow, but they might be there already, they were not there this morning, but they might.
Is the message board there now, telling people that the date is Friday morning?
I'm not sure if they're there today. I think they were going to be put out tomorrow, but they might be there already. They were not there this morning, but they might, but I thought they were going to be put out tomorrow.
So, they're going to be able to take a left at the four-way, though?
Yes.
And go up the hill.
They just will not be able to go behind the island.
Exactly.
Is there any officers will be there Friday morning?
I talked to the police chief about that, and he determined that it wouldn't be necessary.
Okay, that's, anything else? Any other comments on that? And we can jump back to, well, not back, it's seven-thirty now. Mr. Benson. Mr. Benson, candidate for the associate member position on the Zoning Board of Appeals. You can step up, I don't think there's going to be much. Everybody knows you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Benson?
Welcome to the house, somebody with a lot of experience coming back to us. Thank you.
I was getting nervous you weren't going to show. Okay, any other questions?
Chris, I have a, what's your interest to come back? Or that, I'm just curious.
Well, I enjoyed being on it, I just didn't feel I could dedicate the time to being a full member, so it's really, I'm happy to do it as an associate member, but it's a, it's a big time commitment to do this, so.
Absolutely.
If I can be of some assistance, happy to do that, but I just felt, when my term ended, that I couldn't continue on as a full member and give it the time and attention it deserves.
Okay.
If I can be assistance, you stepping in, I'm happy to do that.
Great, thank you. Thanks for coming forward.
I'm just going to, people that may not know, a little bit about your background, just so the public knows.
Sure. I'm an attorney by, by training at least. I am currently an administrative law judge for Social Security. I'm Lieutenant Colonel of the National Guard, I'm a lawyer in the National Guard, and I served four years on the board.
It was four years.
Goes by so quick.
Yeah. I'm just curious, are you, I'm sure you're going to be asked this, are you available tomorrow night? Not to rush you into that, but the town clerk is here, and there is a meeting tomorrow night that I think they might need a member for. I'm just not sure, but I'm sure.
It's eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, yeah, I can. And I think the town clerk.
She's downstairs.
She stayed in case you, so you can get, you don't have to worry about getting swan in, you can get swan in tonight.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion?
So move. Second.
They have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is Al Kirk downstairs?
Yeah, he's there waiting for you.
I will stop by.
Thanks. Next item, I believe, is future agenda items and selectments reports, and I think Mr. Crowley has a couple.
A few things. Our voter turnout in town for the national election was eighty-one percent. I think that says a lot about the town. Nationally, it was about fifty-four percent voter turnout, and it says a lot for the residents of the town that they actually care about what's going on. I'd like to recognize Captain John Ford of Worcester, Worcester Fire Department. He's a long-term resident, longtime resident of West Boylston. He recently retired last week, or earlier this week, with nearly forty-five years of service to the Worcester Fire Department. He was the longest-serving member at the time of his retirement, and one of the longest-serving members of the fire department ever. And I'd also like to thank the, the senior center, they put on for the second year, a Veterans Day brunch. It was a great turnout, and all the veterans that were there greatly appreciated it.
Any other?
I have nothing, thank you.
Just remind everybody, there's a fifth meeting on the thirtieth of this month, and the public is more than welcome.
Okay. And the only other thing I have is that myself and the town administrator met with Holy Cross two days ago, yesterday, Tuesday.
Yesterday in the rain.
Yeah, yesterday in the rain. So, they took our list that we had, and he was positive on some things that he could make decisions on, and then the board, his board is going to meet, I think, tomorrow night, and he's going to.
Middle of December.
Oh, middle of December, right, okay, so he's going to present that to them, and then we're going to get back to him and see what they say.
For Christmas?
Yeah, Christmas gift. But some, some things that he said shouldn't be an issue, and then he, he says he'd love to do it, was internships here in town with students from the school, you know, things like maybe use of the building, things like that, he says shouldn't be an issue, but some of the other items they're going to talk about, and we're going to go back and speak with him, and then I'm sure we'll meet with the board. Okay, anything else? Hearing none, I guess, I'll have a motion.
Motion, Jen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and I just, I think we'll be back, wish everybody happy Thanksgiving next week, we won't be back by then, and I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nobody?
We send our receipt.
I think we have to sign one thing here.
So, the documents for Worcester Development gets.